Any of them working? All right, folks. All right, it's 6:30. Let's get started. All right. So, the mayor is not here tonight, so I said I would fill in for this piece. Per the charter, the annual joint budget meeting, the mayor shall call a joint meeting of the city council and school committee to include the superintendent of schools before the commencement of the annual budget process to review the financial condition of the city, revenue and expenditures forecast, and other relevant information prepared by the mayor in order to develop a coordinated budget. So I'm going to call the roll. So, committee member Callahan.
Here.
Council Cameron is on Cameron time. Council member Cole.
Here.
Council Donahue, not here. Council committee vice chair Hall.
Here.
Council committee member Higgins.
Here.
Council Khan.
Present.
Council Lane is not here. Council McCauley.
Here.
Council, uh, school committee member Menon.
Here.
Council Preston.
Here.
The mayor is not. I am here. Council member Walker.
Present.
Councilor Wallace, not here. Council Wright.
Here.
Council Vogel is not here, and Council Zee.
Here.
So I think we've got a quorum. He also wanted us to say the Pledge of Allegiance before we kicked off, so that everyone would rise. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." And now, I will turn it over to Ethan.
So before we begin, I would like to point out that all of these slides are available on the public meeting calendar page. So if you're having trouble following along, or want to have it digitally, it's out there. It's also linked from the finance webpage. So we've, uh, it's kind of a similar format to prior years. I'm going to walk through, really, the city's budget process, go over some data points, talking about the financial condition of the city, including some debt forecasts and stuff of that nature. And then, the superintendent will go through some topics in terms of what the school has been looking at for, preparing for their FY 2025 budget. So the city's budget process really starts now with this meeting that was added during the last charter update in 2011. It kind of, you know, had the school committee and the city council come together with the mayor to, you know, hopefully kind of put everyone off to a good start to the budget. And I think it's kind of been successful over the past, maybe, eight years or so that we've been doing this. But we try and make tweaks as we go to make it as helpful for everyone as possible. And I think we're, you know, always open to feedback in terms of, you know, additional data that we can be providing to make your jobs easier and to make sure that you're making decisions based on the best available information. So the city's budget process, again, this meeting, really in terms of city departments, I know the schools are a little sooner. We really kick off more in January as guidelines are sent out to departments. They get their initial requests in, along with capital requests to the mayor, really in the February timeframe. The mayor and the team meet, kind of go through all the departmental requests, see where it all adds up to, how it aligns with the, kind of, the mayor's, you know, strategic goals and priorities. And then eventually, the school committee budget gets passed, and it all gets kind of packaged up into a, hopefully, what is a balanced budget that gets submitted to the city council, no later than May 15th by Mass General Law. And then, of course, the city council has 45 days to approve, and during that time, they really take the opportunity to do some comprehensive budget workshops going through each city department, including the school department. And then, it's a full cycle, and this week is a good example, with the tax rate getting set as kind of the culmination of funding this massive budget that we would have passed in the spring. So looking at the city's financial condition, I decided to show it a little differently this year, and it's really shown the way that an outside agency like Standard and Poor's or Moody's might look at a city or town. And really, what they're looking at is, you know, how well is the city managed in terms of their finances? What types of budget flexibility do we have, really, in terms of reserves and availability to kind of pivot if something comes up that we weren't expecting? Of course, looking at our debt position, the local economy, and how that relates to kind of the city's financial condition, and of course, any long-term liabilities. So just starting off with the local economy, you can kind of see here the various sources that we kind of look at as being tied to the local economy, most notably the meals tax, room occupancy tax, motor vehicle excise, building permits, and then the new growth that's getting added each year from any new construction and permit activity. So I've also shown the same data over here on the right, in both nominal dollars and then inflation-adjusted, i.e. constant dollars, with kind of the dotted line there as the average. And I think really what I gleaned is that the city has really shown very stable economic growth, at least over the past 10 years, which I think is a solid financial indicator in terms of the local economy. Of course, in terms of financial management, we're led by really the three branches of government here, with the mayor, the city council, and the school committee. We have a strong financial team, consisting of not only the finance department and city hall, but also the DPS business office, who also helps with the central purchasing, and then, of course, the superintendent's office, you know, where they take up the large part of the budget and have by far the most employees. They're a critical part of the finance team. And of course, we have financial policies that we've worked on, kind of putting together into one comprehensive manual this year, so we're happy to have that posted to the website. That's kind of a go-to place, more for our internal departments, more than anything. If they have a question on something, we can say, hey, go look at the financial policies. What's a capital project? Go look at the financial policies. What do I do if I get a gift? What do I do if I, how do I turn over cash? That sort of thing. It's all in the financial policies manual. And of course, we're supported by our independent auditors at Markham, who are a great resource for the city. So moving into budgetary flexibility, the city's two main reserve accounts, of course, is the stabilization trust fund, sometimes referred to as the rainy day fund at the state level. So you can kind of see there, the dotted line is kind of what we look at as our policy target of 5% of annual revenue, and kind of the green line above it is where we've been trending. We are fortunate to have a strong free cash certification last year with some pandemic-related revenue that we were able to collect, which allowed the city to make a larger infusion into the stabilization trust fund, which is why the balance is slightly above the policy target as of today. And then in terms of the other main reserve account, of course, our free cash, this is the high balance we saw last year, really driven by some one-time revenue sources that we likely won't see for years to come, and kind of the FY 25 certification backing out the large insurance proceed that we got for the fireboat. So those are what we call our unrestricted reserves. In terms of other funds, we still have $428,000 remaining from the city's ARPA allocation, which must be obligated by December 31st of 2024. There's also a couple projects that have been in committee that the administration will be looking at in the next calendar year to decide if they're going to reintroduce those, or perhaps reallocate, you know, the funding to a different project to make sure that we get everything fully obligated by that deadline. And then, of course, we have our three enterprise funds for water, sewer, and harbor. You can see there retained earnings balances, which is what Massachusetts calls their reserve accounts for those funds. So in terms of budget pressures that we need to have some flexibility to be able to address, I think by far the biggest one that we always look at is personnel. In terms of our collective bargaining agreements, by far, the vast majority of employees in the city are part of collective bargaining agreements, which are always being negotiated. And, you know, that's something that, you know, can impact the budget more than anything else from year to year if a department or a union is coming in different kind of than we've projected. But of course, our regular unfunded mandates, there's, you know, a whole boatload of those on the school side that I'm sure the superintendent will talk about. Our pension costs, health insurance can be a major pressure from year to year, depending on where the renewal comes in. We recently went out to bid on solid waste. Those costs will be going up sadly again next year, just a continued trend, you know, driven by inflation, the cost of gas, what have you. And then, of course, over here on the right, our host of capital needs, which we'll kind of get into a bit when we talk about the debt. Oops. In terms of our long-term liabilities, the two large ones that we usually look at are the pension liability. So currently, the city's total liability for the pension system is $153 million. There are planned assets of $112 million, resulting in an unfunded liability of $40 million. That works out to a funded ratio of 73.5%. And you can see how we compare to some of our neighbors. And then, in terms of the other post-employment benefits, OPEB, which is really the cost of providing health insurance to our retired workers, in having to, you know, have a pocket of money set aside to fund that as a known liability once folks retire. So our total liability for OPEB is $83 million. We have planned assets of around $1 million for an unfunded liability of $82 million, and we've currently been funding around $100,000 per year with a plan. Once the pension liability is fully funded, right now, the schedule goes to FY 38. Those funds would theoretically be diverted into this OPEB liability. So kind of the last of those five topics I wanted to cover is the city's debt position. So I often get asked these questions, what does the city have on the books in terms of debt? When does it start to roll off? And how much can we, how much debt can we add? And usually, the question is, without having to do a debt exclusion. So what's on the books currently? Citywide, there is $92.4 million in debt outstanding, and you can see how that breaks down between the general fund, the water, sewer, harbor master, and Community Preservation Act. Focusing on the general fund, there's $50.3 million of that 92, of which $19.8 million is ordinary debt, so that's debt that's issued within the city's Proposition Two and a Half levy limit, and then another $30.5 million that's excluded from the levy limit, which means that we would have gone out to the voters and asked to tax above and beyond what we're allowed to under Proposition Two and a Half. So this is all of the city's general fund debt, both the ordinary and the excluded debt. And I apologize if it's a little bit busy, but I think so, for each year, there's two columns. The solid is the ordinary debt, the dash line is the excluded debt. And really, the purpose of this slide was to show when various projects start to roll off, our debt service rolls. So for example, you can see in FY 25, the debt exclusion for the high school rolls off, and FY 30, the regular debt for the high school stadium rolls off. And then it's not until FY 35 that we see the excluded debt service for this building roll off, and then 37, Phillips Drive rolls off, which was issued within the levy limit. And then a whole bunch of them roll off in FY 38, the Knockmole and the Brezner Hand, the parking garage, as well as two fire trucks. So this, as you see, is our entire debt service schedule within the general fund. So to try and answer the question, how much debt can we add? I put together a slide showing our current budget. So what we have in the budget for ordinary debt service, just around $1.6 million, and then what our current debt schedule is going out for the next five years. So if I go back to the last slide, this is really the projects that are kind of in this bar here, with the largest one being the West End Fire Station, and then the red bar there being the parking garage. So again, that's kind of the navy blue bar. So for each year, I kind of show what debt is rolling off. A lot of debt has rolled off over the past several years, so there's really not much left to roll off in the near term. There's a fire admin vehicle that's rolling off in the current year, and then next year, there's some fire trucks that are rolling off. And then, I also show in the next column what we could potentially be adding in new debt each year, and then, as a hypothetical kind of target benchmark, if you will, I put in a dash line box at the top here, which is equal to 2.5% of the projected budget for each year, which is the number that we've been carrying in the proposed capital improvement program each year. So really, this slide is meant to show kind of the order of magnitude that at least we're looking at, in terms of what we could potentially, and hopefully realistically, issue without having to go out to the voters and ask for a debt exclusion. And then, on the next slide, just for those who want to see what was included in the last slide, again, this is kind of, you can be agnostic between the projects that are included and not included. It's really meant to show like the dollar amounts of what we could realistically fund each year in terms of project costs from debt issuance. So these projects up here in the blue, most of them, you know, coming straight from the capital improvement program, are, were included in the slide. The ones that, you know, didn't fit in are the ones down in this orange box, the largest of which being the Whittier Tech project, which we do include our current estimates on that right after this, but many of you will have seen that as well, with the second largest being eventual renovation and/or addition that might be needed to fire headquarters at $15 million. So in terms of our state aid and educational-related assessments, many of you may have heard of what Massachusetts refers to as the cherry sheet. It was originally printed on cherry paper, which is why they call it that. That's the state aid that the city is receiving from the state each year to fund our overall general fund budget, of which the largest piece, of course, is education. And then highlighted are those that are specific for education, which I've kind of separated out as its own section over here. In the FY 24 state budget, we receive just under $5.7 million in Chapter 70. We pay out net charter school tuition of just under $2 million, and then we have net school choice tuition of around $373,000, which works out to education-related aid of around $4.1 million for FY 24, of which $3.5 million goes directly into the general fund, and $563,000 goes into the school choice revolving fund. Those designations are set by law. And then, in terms of other educational assessments, of course, we have the two Chapter 74 vocational programs that Newbury Port participates in for Whittier Tech. As of the last budget, there was 29 students with an assessment of 612,000. And then, for the FY 24 budget, there are six students that attend Essex Tech that participate in the agriculture program, which is just over 135,000. So I included the Whittier Tech estimates, really as informational purpose, and again, these are all out on the website if you need to reference them. So the last update we received was as of October 24th, and I think as the mayor said during his update, at least to the city council on Monday, there really hasn't been any new information on this front. So currently, what we're looking at is a total local share for the entire Whittier district of 264 million, of which Newbury Port's share is 11.5%, which works out to a project cost of $30.5 million for Newbury Port. If you add in the interest, the carrying cost over 30 years, it's $59.5 million divided by 30 years, it works out to just under $2 million in debt service. And the Whittier is currently assuming bond rates of 5% and interest rates on notes of 4%. So based on the new average single-family home, the impact of that $2 million would be approximately $272 for the average single-family home. And this is all the math, which I think many of you have seen, and really, the purpose of this was to show, Newbury Port, as of the last budget, had 29 students enrolled at the Whittier. Our student-age population, which is how the capital costs get allocated, are 11.5%, which means the difference between who we actually send to the Whittier and our student-age population is a difference of 9.3%, which is by far the largest disparity that we see among the participating municipalities. So for that reason, if you divide the estimated annual debt service by the number of students attending, that works out to an annual debt service of $68,000 for Newbury Port compared to an average of $13,000. And then, that's the same thing in graphical format. So again, the average is here, and we're over here. And really, like I said, unfortunately, I don't have many updates on this project. I believe it goes to a vote of the Whittier School Committee on December 14th as to whether or not they'll be moving with a community-wide vote in January. So I guess, you know, more to come, and I'm sure the mayor will keep you apprised as well. And this was really just for additional information, showing what we're currently paying for the Whittier per student, $23,856, and what we would be paying if this project were to pass, it'd be just over $92,000. And then for comparison, for the six kids we sent to Essex Tech, it's around $23,000 per student. Oh, sure.
So our annual cost for Whittier, is that for a student enrolled, or is that also tied to the overall?
Yeah, so it's broken down into two components. So the operating cost, the 611th to 69, is based on the actual 29 students that we go, that we send there. However, the capital is based on the overall student population in each city or town.
I guess what I'm asking is, for all of the other districts, is there a touch for a student on an annual basis in the overall capital? Is there a percentage at all around that $23,000 or $21,000 if you exclude the capital?
Yes, it should be, yeah, because that's based on the state formula, yeah, for the actual tuition.
So the annual formula is based on the students enrolled?
Right, kind of the traditional formula that you'd see, yeah. The capital is kind of the one where it's a slightly different formula than you might see in a lot of other vocational district agreements. And unless, I guess we could open up to some questions if anyone had some before. I turn it over to the superintendent.
I just have a question, if this is being recorded, when we speak, are we being picked up? Because I don't know if we can talk with the mic. You're obviously being.
I believe the intent, Port Media was going to come in at the end to pass around a mic.
Yeah, so if we're speaking from the audience, we should be using a mic.
Right, otherwise, they won't hear you at home. Good point. Yeah, so maybe, I don't know how you want to do this.
Can you advise?
Yeah, sure.
So Ethan, can you go back to the debt slide for a minute, the one with the gap to the 2.5%? So I don't want to get too far into weeds, but effectively, from the top of the blue line to the blue dash box, you're basically showing about $1 million is needed to pay that debt service.
Correct.
My question for you is, how are we going to find $1 million in the operating budget to fund that? Because the 2.5% is the best practice, we understand that.
Mm-hmm.
It's the actual, the reason why we want to use 2.5%. But just coming off the free cash debate from Monday night, you could obviously take $1 million of hypothetical free cash we would generate, and then have a lower amount at the end of the year, but then it's not clear how we would fund other operating capitals. So.
Yeah.
Without getting too far beyond that, I mean, I'm interpreting this correctly, I think, that's the question. How will we find $1 million in the operating budget to make that gap?
Yes, yeah, so that's a great question, and I think the way that I've shown this is not really, it's really for illustration. In reality, we don't issue debt like this. We wouldn't go out and just issue all the debt right off the bat for these projects. What we realistically do is start them off with short-term notes to get the projects going, and we'd gradually issue the long-term debt to incorporate it into the budget. That way, we, exactly, we'd avoid that $1 million hit in one year, but instead, could bring it on over a number of years.
Thank you. I would just say, in sort of as this is the kickoff, I think it would be helpful for us to model that in a couple ways in the next budget, to say, how would you find $500,000, let's say, or $250,000, all the way up to the million? And then what would the impact be on free cash? If that's where it's sort of going to come from at the end, or if it's going to have an impact inside the existing budget by reduction somewhere else? It would be helpful to study that or think about scenarios.
Sure.
Thank you.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
Yeah, just to add to that.
Yeah, just to add to that, too, and I think because we are coming off of Monday's tax discussion, the other thing that would be helpful, since we are in the beginning of this process, is that, you know, we've heard a lot of streamlining efforts, too, that have been done to consolidate or to, an example is, you know, DPS, in terms of having a purchase agency in one location, things like with IT, with licenses consolidation. There's been a lot that we know has been done to consolidate. It would be really helpful during the budget process to have some type of a memo or some kind of, to show the impact, where we've streamlined and how that's really helped us in creating a budget that incorporates that. Because we, that was the big discussion, is come budget time, are we basing a budget? And I'll copy or use a word that I think Counselor Cameron said, right sizing. And I really do like that. And I feel like, what have we done to make these things work in a way that's actually a manageable budget and shows the efficiencies, I guess, gained from where we have seen consolidation? So that would be, I know it's not always the way we currently see the budget presented that way, but if there could be some thoughtful kind of process put into that would be helpful.
Good point.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. I'm going to pass out. I have some information regarding last year. The school committee has seen this much time, so they good at watching reruns. But this is, basically, we set up a parent advisory council, and we get a lot of feedback from parents, you know, throughout the year. But one of the pieces, as we were presenting to the parent advisory council regarding the strategic plan, strategic plan updates, was we should really highlight a lot of the accomplishments that we made last year as we're moving into this school year. So it was great feedback, not only from the parent advisory council, but also our school committee. So this is just some information that we put together. And then this will also, we're also going to provide this at the senior center and other locations, so people really understand, you know, a lot of the successes of the schools. And that is, really, the theme is to keep the strategic planning alive and well and kind of what drives our mission. I'm going to flip through this, because I know you all have the information, but I'd like to go through some more feedback that we received, you know, going into the sixth budget season for us, that we received from not only city officials, but also school committee, parents, and really taking the school budget and really trying to break it down, trying to take out all the lingo, but really break it down so people on the outside can just see how a school budget really operates. So this is in your packet, and this is also going to be provided on our website and a lot of our budget presentations, so people can reference back to school budgeting. So the first piece, as we always do, we start off with our priorities. And the first piece is the visioning and the strategic plan, which guides all of our decisions. Another big aspect for us as we start our budget season is teaching and learning and making sure that we're providing all the resources for our staff. As we all know, our biggest investment in Newburyport is the people, our staff, our students and the families, and making sure we're reaching all learners. And then the last piece is operations, making sure our schools are safe, secure, updated with all of that information. Then as Ethan said, part of our budget process, right in the beginning, we look at a contractual obligation. So see, these are the mandated aspects of our budget that we got to make sure that we're funding. So the contractual obligations, our teachers' contract, our IAs, ASME union contract, and non-union staff. So we start off with that. And then the other piece is the federal and state mandates that were required to implement, regardless if you have funding or not. And those, that's what's referred to sometimes as the unfunded mandates. With the success that Newburyport has had with our newcomers and the increase in the migrant population coming into Massachusetts, that's going to be one area, as we go through our budget, that we're going to need to really pay attention to. Because we do anticipate more families coming in, not only to Newburyport, but there's a lot of families coming into the North Shore. All right, I gotta scroll down, hopefully. Let's see, oh, there we go. I don't know what this is. Sorry about that. All right. So I think the other piece in budget management throughout the school year, so we're, always say, we're people business. So from September to June, we're dealing with 2,200 students and families, we're dealing with over 430 employees on a daily basis. And if you reflect on your own family throughout a school year, of all the challenges, the ups and downs that all families incur throughout a school year, this is also aspects of our budget and having the ability to adjust and to meet the needs of all students and staff throughout a school year. So I'm not going to read you all of this, but here are some of the things that we need to address, you know, throughout a school year as you're dealing with people. The level service budget, a lot of people will hear we talk about that, and that's where we really take the programming and the staffing patterns that we have now, and then that we move them into next year. So that's where you look at the contractual obligations, the salary increases, the steps and lanes, all of that aspects of the budget. Also, you look at the cost of inflation, we look at the cost of transportation, we look at the cost of out-of-district placement increases. So there's a lot of work that goes into trying to project, taking what we have currently and moving it into next year to have an estimate or a pretty good understanding of where we're going to be. So as we go through our budget, we have expenditure assumptions, so we look at staff and programming. So this is where retirements, this is adjustments, this would be people leaving the district, this would be where do we, if a teacher retires and we're looking to hire a replacement for that classroom teacher, we usually utilize a step-five master's degree as kind of like as a placeholder for our budget. So as we move out throughout the year, we'll start to receive people who are looking to retire. So we'll anticipate, that will be an opening, and then as we move into next year, that's kind of the placeholders that we use for salaries. So some salaries may come in a little bit higher than that step-five, and then other salaries might come in a little bit lower. The other piece that adds to our changes and programs and operations, I think we've done a great job over the past six years at really looking at our staffing patterns and programming, and then seeing if we're gaining the outcomes that we're looking for. And when we don't see that, we either reshuffle staffing patterns or have a refocus in programming, or we'll eliminate a program that's not meeting the needs of the students. Our legal mandates and accreditation, so obviously, there's legal mandates that all schools need to follow, and I've listed those there, that also, you know, as we develop our budget, we have to make some assumptions on that. Professional development, you know, we invest in our people, our staff, and making sure they're having the professional development that's going to assist us to achieve a lot of our strategic planning in our initiatives throughout the school year. And then technology is also a big aspect. So not only the technology upgrades for the classroom, but the technology that goes in upgrades to security, to the phone system, which will be a big upgrade that we're going to need to have at the high school. So these are some of the things as we develop our budget that we go through. And then obviously, we're a school system, so curriculum instruction assessment is really important to us, and making sure we have the support and the resources for our students and programs, and we've listed some of those there. And then last is just some general instructional supplies that we have to purchase every year. And then you try to anticipate what the inflation rate's going to be on those materials. Big budget drivers are transportation for all districts. So there's mandated transportation, which hits both of those, the regular education transportation, bringing students to and from school, and then also other transportation requirements, special education, students with disabilities that need to be transported to out-of-district placement. So those costs typically will increase year to year. And as we said, contractual obligations, the salary projections, and I've listed, you know, a bunch of different areas in that for everyone to look at. We understand that utilities are going to go up, you know, cost of energy goes up every year. Steve Bergholm has done a great job with a lot of the programming that he has done throughout the buildings, utilizing energy-sufficient, you know, changing out light bulbs and lighting. But we do anticipate those costs to go up, and then we have some of those estimates in there. And then last but not least, as we said, mandated programming expenses, English language learner, McKinney-Vento homeless education, and that also incorporates foster care students. And then the Ed Reform Act mandates, and then, you know, we do share proportional sheer services with some of our students with disabilities in other districts. And then revenue assumptions, with Ethan has talked about, our Chapter 70 state aid, we anticipate, you know, as we develop this, that we anticipate, hopefully, it will be the same, if not more, moving into next year. We did receive that bump last year, and it was the first year that the kindergarten was counted as enrollment, which increased the city's Chapter 70. Medicaid reimbursement is, we anticipate that to be around $200,000. And then special education circuit breaker. So this program, through Governor Baker and Governor Healey, they have been funding this the past few years at 75% over the threshold, and the threshold is about $47,000 per student. So you'll get 75% reimbursement on that. There have been years during tougher budget times that that 75 reimbursement has gone down to 70%, which is a significant loss. You're always behind in special ed costs, so the 75% is helpful. As we all know, we've talked about this, is our school choice, students who leave the district and the students who we bring into the district under school choice law. And then typically, we want to have a balance there of around $500,000 to $700,000. And that's something, Mr. Little Hale, the last couple of years, we've been spending that down, because during the COVID years, that area, you know, we weren't in school, so we weren't spending a lot of funds at school choice. Our user fees, different areas, athletics, transportation, preschool, and building use fees, those are the building use fees or the rental fees. And then our entitlement grants. So entitlement grants are grants based on your demographic, that you are, from the federal government and the state, that you get allocated. You're entitled for that funding. And then we also aggressively pursue our competitive grants and foundational funds. So our Swayze Foundation for Professional Development has been a great asset to Newburyport, and then we all know the great work of the Newburyport Ed Foundation. So those are some of our foundational funds that help, you know, Swayze and the Ed Foundation really enhance the programming that we have. And then last but not least, our tuition-based programs, so the early childhood tuition. And then as we've been developing some in-district programming, our therapeutic program at the high school, we do have one student from another district who is paying tuition to take access to that program. So that was kind of a pilot, and we would really like to hope to expand that. So that's kind of a quick rundown of all of the budget process and just some key elements of how we develop our budget. Also, we also, you can look at prior budget, you know, from last year, we posted those on our website, and it's also a live link, hopefully, in this presentation. Everything, as I said, we developed through our strategic planning. It was a great process that we did for an entire year, where we had 700, over 750 people in the community participate, from community members, parents, students, faculty, support staff. And then our timeline, as Ethan said, we start a little bit earlier with our budget holders and our school councils begin that process also at every school. So these are the dates for us. But I kind of just want to, the people that are watching, so this is posted, this is hopefully helpful summary of kind of how the school budget begins to develop. And let me go back to the PowerPoint and kind of looking at some of our costs. And I think we'll take questions at the end, right? So as we said, future focus planning model, Amy Webb, which really drove our strategic planning. So the portrait of the graduate was designed as the vision and for the entire district, and that's a five- or 10-year vision that continues. The strategic objectives, really, you're kind of taking all of those aspects of the vision, you develop strategies to acquire that. And then what's really important at the ground level is the one-to-two-year tactical. So that is the faculty, the support staff, the administration enacting this strategic plan. So the vision that came out of the Newburyport community, these are the five real pillars that are driving our portrait of a graduate, and basically, what's the skill set and characteristics that our students are going to need to be successful when they leave Newburyport High School? And it starts from pre-K all the way through. So first piece is physically, socially, emotionally well for all of our students, literate across all of the disciplines. Our students, just like society today, need to be creative, innovative problem solvers, because they're going to be working in jobs that haven't even been imagined or created. And I always like to use Lisa Furlong's son, who left Newburyport High School with an engineering degree, and he's designing drones. And if you said to him, his junior, senior, you're going to be designing drones, drones weren't even invented yet. So for us, it's really focused on that creative, innovative problem solver that is going to be ready and be flexible to adapt to today's real world. And then really, this has been a big push, and you can see in a lot of the work that we've done, civically engaged, where our students, bringing student voice and giving students the ability to take leadership roles within our school system. And then really just being prepared for life after graduation. So we talked about those five strategies, so these are kind of the buckets where this, a lot of this falls in, teaching and learning, support, so all students are ready to learn, culture of self-discovery and personal achievement, organizational design, and then being an active community of all stakeholders. So our district goals, we had professional practice goal, this is year two of this goal, for the whole district to increase the instructional expertise to support teachers and meeting the needs of all learners. Our student learning goal is to improve student achievement for all students while closing existing achievement gaps. School improvement, the ability of grade-level content-specific, student and parent-teacher-friendly data cycles. So you may have heard about the middle school student-led conferences, where students are now taking ownership of their own academic data. And then the last piece is having a comprehensive, rigorous, equitable curriculum. So as we move into this school year, this is some of, as we break those student learning district goals down, these are some of the areas that we're focused on throughout the school year for this year. All right, budget time now. And as we said, every move or every decision we're making around budgeting is really tying back to that strategic planning. So the, when we look at our expenses and allocations, so our salaries make up about 73.6% of the overall budget. Our fixed cost is around 5%. Our special ed non-salary is around 11.8%. Our special ed non-salary is around 11.8%. Building and grounds non-salary is 3%. And then the remaining budget is 6.7% overall. So the sources of funds that come into our operational budget, and city council and school community members have seen this a lot, but people that might be watching, our city allocation is the biggest funding source. Our school tuition, school choice tuition is also a funding source. And then our other tuition, educatious, and as we mentioned, the tuition in, as we're trying to build our special education programming, circuit breaker, athletics, transportation, kindergarten, back in the day, that was a paid, this is tuition-free kindergarten that we've implemented. Title I, those are the entitlement grants that I talked about earlier because of certain demographics. And then IDA is our special education grant that we receive, and then the totals. Our other federal and state grants that we didn't mention, so we have an early childhood special education grant, improve education quality, that's a Title II A grant. A Title IV grant is also around professional development and equity. Enhanced health services is $75,000. That's for our nursing staff and a lot of our wellness programs that we fund throughout the district. And then the COVID, our COVID Fund, ESSR 1, 2, and 3, as of, at the end of this year, those funds will be, have been spent. And then non-recurring grants, obviously, that's 22, we had $205,000, that was also part of the COVID relief. And then the last is teaching, remote learning, which we received in 2021, but those grants are no longer there. The private grants that we just talked about, the Swayze Foundation, to support professional development for teachers, our NEF, also to enhance a lot of the work that we've already been doing. All right. So this is a question that we receive. If you look over the years, our enrollment trends really haven't changed too much within, I would say, 100 students up and down over the past few years. But what really has changed is our student population. So when we start looking at school choice funds, so this is over the years from, you know, Phil Littlehill took from 2001 all the way to 2024, and can kind of show you the revenue, the expenses, and the closing balance. And if you look between 2018 and 21 during the COVID years, there was not a lot of spending because we were pretty much hybrid and not in school. School choice receiving and sending, so the numbers of students in tuition, so these are full-time equivalent or full-time students coming in. So we have more students taking advantage of the Newberryport Public Schools, and we have some students leaving. The Newberryport Public Schools is choice out, and when we looked at the students that are leaving, typically, the majority of them are at the elementary level because they like to, I think it's Salisbury Elementary, they like that K to six model. We have a couple transitions in Newberryport. Typically, in sixth grade and seventh grade, those students come back to the middle school. The parents and families just like that model, that traditional model. This is what I think is really also important. So a lot of the increased staffing that we've been providing the last few years with our adjustment counselors, special education staffing, is really working with the students, the students' needs have, are changing, and our demographics are changing. So when we look at that, it's a lot of the support services that we need to have in place to support our students and families. So the first graph here is our low income, and then the state changed the wording to economically disadvantaged, and now the state has changed the wording back to low income. But you can see the trajectory, you know, as it's been increasing. The other piece that we're seeing in the past few years is our demographics, our English language learner. So we broke this down to first language, not English in the home, and then English language learner, where they've acquired or have some English language skills. So you can see this population is growing, and we anticipate that in the next few years to continue to grow. This is another unfunded mandate, so we're required to provide, you know, top education for all students. We've done a great job in Newberryport, our newcomers from other countries, you know, the whole community rallied. Our Assistant Superintendent wrote a grant, a competitive grant, which we received for $130,000. That provides a lot of that support. But we were one of 13 districts that got that grant. So I know on the North Shore that the migrant population, it's something that the superintendents are talking to our legislators about, and the governor, that we need, and I think the governor understands, there needs to be more funding to support these families. And then students with disabilities, over the years, this trajectory is also increasing. This is why we really believe it's important for us to establish in-district programming to meet the needs of as many students as we can. And that's for us. It's good for families and students to stay in Newberryport, and at the same time, it could be a cost savings, you know, for the district down the road. And then the high-needs population is taking the population of all of those populations we just mentioned and categorizing them, so you can see the high-needs population of our students and families is also kind of on a trajectory upward. So the special education costs here, we have tuition, transportation, personnel, non-personnel for a total. And if you all recall during last year's budget season, the Massachusetts Operational Service Division, or OSD, set the rate FY '24. Down the bottom here, you can see it was at 14% increase for out-of-district placement, and they set the rate for this year 4.69%. So we can look, this is one cost center that we can look at and look at our students and kind of have a pretty good estimate of where those costs are going to be down the road for next year. So that really won't be a guessing. We'll have a pretty accurate number of what those costs would be. And then what I wanted to provide for the city council and school committee, I've seen this before, but also people at home, so the out-of-district placement tuition rates. So these are the tuition rates, and we have one or more students in these different out-of-district placements. So you can see, these are the costs that you add, you know, 4.69% to a lot of these costs, and it starts to cost a lot. This is another area that the state and the governor and the superintendents, this is impacting, I think, all districts, and there's got to be some sort of a formula, other than circuit breaker, to provide support for districts. So this is one area that superintendents are working with the legislation, legislators about. Last but not least, this is our budget process timeline, very similar to the city. We're just starting a lot earlier, and we'll have our individual budget holder meetings in the next month or so. Those budget holders will present, will put together a list of all of the asks and the rationale behind those. And then our preliminary budget is typically presented to school committee late January, early February. And then we go through our budget season, multiple iterations to get to a comfortable number that will continue to move the district forward, but also working with the city council and the city to come up with that number, what that's going to look like. And that's all I have. Oh, there's no questions, great. Thank you. Yes, we have the mic.
The pie chart that you showed for fiscal year '24, which is the approved budget for this year, just clarifying that. Do you anticipate that those percentages, how much do those typically change one year to the next? So not talking about the overall budget number, but the percentage allocation between those? Maybe Phil can, you know?
Yeah, Phil can probably, yeah, why don't you come on up? But yeah, this, as we, when we start looking, I think, and Phil can answer this, actually very specifically, but I just think in general, the salaries, we'll have a good understanding where those are going to be because those are pretty much fixed costs. And then we anticipate, like, the non-salary, that's going to be like utilities and stuff. But we'll have you jump up to the mic.
So to talk specifically about '24, there was a slight change in terms of the overall distribution. The salary percentage went down from about 74.5 to 73.6. Where did it end up? It ended up in sped non-salary because that was the big increase that we had in terms of special ed out-of-district tuitions. That was a $800,000 overall increase to this year's budget, between the 14% increase for this year, as well as some very expensive placements that we had. And there was a typo on the special ed one, the 4.69, should have said fiscal year '25, not '24. I'll go fire my editor.
But in general, these percentages for fiscal year '25?
They're going to stay the same. I mean, historically, in Newberryport, it's been around 70, in the mid-'70s in terms of overall for personnel, because that's where we want to be investing the money. You know, in terms of the breakdown for fiscal year '25, as the superintendent mentioned, you know, the three big areas of concern we have is transportation, we have to go out to bid on the bus contract. In terms of utilities, the city has signed a new contract for the generation of electricity. We're going from about nine cent a kilowatt hour to 12 cents. So that's going to be an increase. But you know, as Superintendent said, Steve does a great job in terms of managing those things. And the third one, obviously, again, is the special ed out-of-district tuitions. I'll just stay there.
Actually, just to clarify too, on the transportation increase since the contract's being negotiated, which will affect fiscal year '25, that's not reflected because we don't know that percent, but is there an idea, or is there some, as a placeholder, or how is that, when will that be negotiated? I guess that's a question, when will we know that number?
So the answer is, we're going out to bid, the RFP will be going out by end of December, first week of January. So I would expect by the end, mid to end of February, we're going to know what it is. The problem is with transportation, we'll probably get one bid. And at least, if we do have one bid, the law does allow us, since we only have one bidder, we could actually negotiate with them. If you get more than one bid, you take the little bid, and that's what you're left with. You always have the option also that if the bid comes in, or the bids come in, we don't like them, we've built enough timing to go back out to bid. I did that once when I was in Salem, and it really didn't get us anything, but we do have some options. But we will know early on in the budget process what that number is actually going to be.
Great, thank you. And then the next slide, if both of you guys could stay there.
Yeah, and just to follow up on transportation, last year, we had a subcommittee, Transportation Subcommittee with recommendations. So as we go through the bidding process, we're going to present some of those recommendations to see if we can get a cost savings there too. So there's a lot of work that went in with school committee last year.
Okay, thank you.
Which slide?
Actually, one more after this. Just a question on ESSR III.
Yes.
First of all, the asterisk isn't explained anywhere, but I'm guessing because it's kind of undistributed over the three fiscal years, is that what that asterisk and then the summation? I guess I was a little curious in terms of fiscal year '25, there will be some carryover as well? No?
No, so, right. So we're planning, so the ESSR III funds will be spent at the end of this fiscal year. Yep. Did you want to? I mean, we just kind of broke that up for two years for the ESSR. So that's where you have, anyone touch base on that one?
So the ESSR III funds, similar to the American Rescue Funds, have to be spent by December 2024, which, you know, sorry, no, it's, sorry, take that back, so number 30 of 2024. So that only gets you three months of the fiscal year '25. In the last three years, we've never planned on having any ESSR fund leftover, any ESSR funds leftover for fiscal year '25. So, you know, we've used a lot of the ESSR III funds to do a lot of our, I'll call them capital needs, in terms of upgrading security and things like that. So, you know, we have been weaning ourselves off of paying for positions, enrolling those into the regular operating budget, and using the ESSR III funds primarily for big-ticket projects.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to make an observation, given the large and different audience that we have here, and one of the slides that you mentioned that you assume new teachers coming into the district will be about $68,000 salary?
Placeholder, yep.
Yep, so that's just the average salary for, you know, over 400 employees. And it is, it's critically important to the health of a school district that the teachers and the staff of a school district live in that community. They don't, they won't all, of course, there's so many reasons why people choose where to live, but it's really, really important for the health of a school district that the teachers and staff are part of the community, that know families, that know kids, that know the place that they live. And so just given, you know, the audience here, we really need to make sure that Newberryport is affordable for 400 employees that make an average of $68,000 a year.
I have a question. And this is a good play, this is a good chart to be on. So at the, so as we go into '25, and that's the model that we're looking at right now, you're basically going to have a projected salary increase, we know probably like 1.4 million or something like that, roughly, increase. But we're also losing a million dollars of ESSR funds going forward here, and we do have some cost pressures that you've identified, transportation, unknown what sped is going to be, as well as, let's just say, utilities or anything else. Where do you guys think you're going to, what's the modeling that you might have been doing to say, we're going to do some restructuring, or, you know, because I can't see, given the debates we've been having about the budget spending line, I don't see it as a straight-line pass-through anymore. And so my question is, you know, have you been engaging in modeling to take good scenarios, bad scenarios? Everybody wants level funding and above, but have you modeled like zero increase, you know, that kind of stuff as worst-case scenarios and things like that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think, I mean, we've been doing this for a while, but I agree. So we do like best-case scenario, worst-case scenario. What's really important for us is, once our budget holders present, you know, from the school councils, their overall budget needs and budget requests, then what we'll do is we'll work together and develop like, just exactly what you said, best-case scenario. So what we'll do is we'll bring in all of our budget holders, and we'll have budget deliberations. Like for, I'll give you an example, if, you know, if Mr. Wolf, and this isn't any of, this is just hypothetical, so I don't want to. But let's say if I'm the middle school principal, and there's a social-emotional need in the sense like, you know, we really need an adjustment counselor, and they'll give a reason why, you know, if it's, we're having more social-emotional issues, we need an adjustment counselor so students can access. And then maybe the high school principal says, I'd like to have another history teacher because we'd like to offer more electives. So what will happen is we'll develop a priority list. So the high school principal might listen to the middle school principal and say, you know what, that adjustment counselor is more important for you at this time than this high school teacher. So I'm going to move the high school history teacher electives as a priority two. And then some people may come in as a priority one, but as we deliberate, we develop that priority list. And then from there, we go through just exactly what you said, like worst-case scenarios, what, if there's no adds to staff, no extra, you know, what's that going to look like? You know, do we, you know, if we had to cut, you know, what's that going to look like? So part of multiple iterations and the multiple budget meetings that we that we have in district, we go through a lot of those scenarios. But that's always on, it's always on the radar. I mean, I've been part of that whole recession back in 2008, '09, and '10. And there was a lot of difficult decisions on, you know, so that's always, as a superintendent, that's always in the back of your mind and your radar. So we have plan A, B, C, D, E, if we need it. So, great question.
So the elephant in the room, of course, is Whittier. And $2 million is a lot of money to absorb in an operational budget. If the vote, in the worst-case scenario, the vote will pass, and all the communities will vote in favor of it, or at least enough will, if we have a debt exclusion, and that gets turned down, you know, we're looking at $2 million that we have to find for the next 30 years on both sides of the budget. So there's probably a high likelihood that we will be facing some kind of cuts on the school side and also on the municipal side, if we don't do a debt exclusion.
Yeah, I think, as we said, you know, we, you know, hope for the best, and we always plan for the worst. You know, we're looking, because, you know, there's a, we're, part of our college and career readiness, you know, if you're looking at the successes that we've had, we've added more dual enrollment college courses for our kids, we've had more students taking AP courses, we're developing a comprehensive internship program. But phase three for us is to develop a vocational program. So we're in the process of planning that, just in, you know, for either way, the way the Whittier goes. So if all of a sudden there's no more Whittier, what are we going to do to provide vocational education program for our students? And we're developing a plan for that. But, you know, just like I think everyone in the community of Newburyport, it's, we got to see, you know, how this all turns out. And, you know, and plan, if, you know, whatever those scenarios are, you know, we will work, you know, we'll work through it. I think the one thing that we have is a great, first of all, a great community that supports the public schools. We have great people that, you know, we collaborate with. But we also, I think, have done a great job of, you know, some years of working within our operational budget. We may not have gotten a lot of funding to support a lot of things, but by us reimagining and looking at our programming, we've continued to move the district forward. So that would always be our goal, even if we are looking at cuts and things like that. And I, like I said, I've had experience, you know, going through that during the, you know, the recession in, you know, '09, '10, and '11. But we've always, we always, number one thing for us was maintain the programs. You go through some tough economic times, and then, you know, you continue to work with people. So, yeah. As, I'm not sure what's going to happen or where the city's going to be. It's out of, it's out of my hands, but I think we're pretty well adapted to, you know, where those cards fall. We'll pick up, pick up the pieces and continue to move the district forward.
I have a question for Ethan.
Yeah, give him some questions, you know?
The healthcare benefits for the students, for the teachers are carried in the municipal budget. Do you have a current number for what percentage of our budget is school-related costs?
So, all in, it's around 60% of the entire general fund budget.
Okay.
So that was, okay. The, said differently, the education-related costs make up 60% of the city's budget. So that include, that's the loaded cost, including health insurance benefits. So not just, not just teacher payroll, but the entire school budget plus health insurance equals 60%.
Can you clarify, Ethan? I'm sorry. That's just health insurance in response to Council Wright's question?
Sorry, I thought the question was how much of the budget makes up schools, oh, so the question is health insurance?
60% is not health.
Oh, God, no.
The entire school. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, no, the health insurance budget makes up about 5% of the total city budget.
So, I just had a couple of questions, Ethan. Since you're up, I wanted to ask you, do you have an estimate yet of where you're starting with the city budget? Are you starting on a full two and a half? Is that the current line of thinking? Are you contemplating starting at less than a two increase to the levy limit, or not sure yet?
Yeah, I think, I think, given the capital needs that we've been talking about, including trying to carve out more of the budget for not just debt service, but kind of the cash capital that we're paying out of the budget each year, you know, whether it's streets and sidewalks, or, you know, anything else. Yeah, I think, I think frankly, we, there's really no doubt to start with that. I think to the extent that we're able to leave any excess capacity out there, we would.
All right, thank you. And then, second question, maybe back to the schools for a second, is maybe for Phil, actually, the million on that SRR 3, do you just have a rough percentage of how much of that is something that might be considered ongoing, like a salary? Just percentage, like is 20% of the million dollars what you have to wean off for a position? Is it 80%, 20%?
No, right now, it's about a couple hundred thousand for this year. So it's way down.
Okay.
You know, again, having worked with the superintendent, we've known that we were, we did not want to hit the fiscal cliff. And so, as we've gone through the last couple of budget go-rounds, you know, superintendent says, you know, we look at what we have for staffing, where, you know, can we reallocate money, or, you know, if some people leave, do we need those positions anymore? And then you replace some of the positions that we added because of the COVID needs. So, again, we've got to the point where there's not a whole lot left in COVID being charged, being used for salaries.
10 to 20%, somewhere is what it sounds like.
Right now, we, we got like 500,000 left on it, so I'm going to use maybe 100,000 or so for salaries this year.
Okay. And then the next numerical question is, because that staffing number sounds like it's very finite, because we know what the contract is, it's a relatively new contract, do you have a number? Council McCollough mentioned 1.4, but I'm just wondering, is that number known yet?
I was just talking to the superintendent, I'm in the process right now of rolling the salaries.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I would love to know. And the other interesting thing is what the actual percentage ends up being. Because we always get these contracts, and we talk about 3, 3, and 3, or 2, 1, 3. But we know that with steps and ladders and other external factors, that's not a direct number you can use.
If you look at it, each step increase is approximately 2%. So if the, if you settle the contract for 0, 0, 0, it'd still be a 2, 2, 2 in terms of the hit. And so this year, for fiscal year '25, it's a 2% for the, for the teachers, plus an extra 500 for our increase in longevity for our longer tenured teachers. So, the top of my head right now, I'd say the average increase for teachers would be somewhere between 3 and 3.5%.
Got it.
You know, again, I got to look at the makeup of what it looks like. It looks like we've got quite a few, I think, retirements coming up, so there'll be some savings there as well. So, you know, again, we're rolling the numbers because we're trying to get it ready for the principals to start working on their budgets in a couple of weeks.
All right. Last question for superintendent is just, I think a really good trend has been the strategic plan coming into the budget process. I know in your early years, that's something we talked about a lot on the, on the Education Committee. I guess my, not to always want more, but I mean, I guess, can you tell us what the tactical goals are, let's say, for the next year, and help us now take the next step, which I think is to draw a line between a tactical goal for this year and the budget, and maybe the extras if we get to that point? Just by way of example, as a layperson, it seems like the knock and the mullin have some room for improvement, just as, again, as a layperson, say, looking at scores or something like that. They seem to be the areas of the district where there could be improvement. But now, I'm looking to say, draw a line between a budget initiative and a tactical goal this year, or maybe two years out, instead of the long 10 or...
Yeah. And I think we've, you know, I think that's one benefit of being in a community for a while, because we do listen to your feedback. And as part of our budget process, we're going to be tying a lot of the ask and initiatives and supplies directly back to the strategic plan. So you'll see where it's showing up. So if we're talking, you know, SEL, that was always a question, how much money we're spending on SEL. We're trying to go back and tag that as part of the budget process. But this is a tactical matrix here. It's part of your, so these are the initiatives overall for this school year that we're working on. You know, in a future meeting, I can probably report a little bit, you know, a little bit more detail on this. But this is the piece that we're trying to keep in the forefront of, you know, here's our budget priorities, you know, here, you know, we passed out, here's the successes that we've had last year, here are the things we're working on this year. To make this, and from school committee input, is to have like, you know, two or three updates on where we're at with the strategic plan and where we're at, to make that, just really that dialogue ongoing. And this is why we really felt like the visioning that the community worked on, like this, these five areas, everyone can relate and understand that. So, you know, from every community member, you know, you don't have to be in the schools to fully understand how important this is. But if people do want to dig a little bit deeper, they can go in. So these right here are a lot of the priorities that we're working on, and there's different aspect of that. But when we present the budget to school committee, as we start to get into some of the finalized items, you're going to see those strategies and those tactics appearing next to the budget requests. Yes.
Just to follow up, I think it's also important for council members and the members of the public to know, there's also school improvement plans that are more detailed for the school's specific goals.
Yes, that's right.
And strategies. And that does get to the level of sort of, you know, focusing back on some metrics. So those will be presented, I think, at one of the upcoming school committee meetings. And they will be posted online as well.
Correct.
So getting down into some of the details on, on school-specific strategies, I think that would be useful for folks to understand that.
Correct, yeah. Thank you for that. That's 100% right. Those school improvement plans are very specific, school-specific goals, that our principals will be presenting in future school committee. But those are also on the website. If people are watching, they can kind of take a look at what we're doing.
On that, so do those tie into the budget discussions, right?
Yes.
So when they come with their suggestions?
Correct.
That gets rolled into some of that?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, that's the role of our school council, is made up of parents, students, teachers, that they provide input on the school improvement plans. And they also, when we begin the budget process, it starts with them at the building level, for asks, as they're moving forward. And then they'll present those to us. All right, did you want to close the meeting, council president? Does anyone have questions for you?
No.
Oh.
No, I would be remiss if I did not recognize our two duly-elected school committee members in the back, Ms. Shaw and Mr. Boger. And our two, round of applause. And our two counselors-elect, Harmon and Grantis are here as well. So thank you all for coming.